In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to remind everyone if they have a chance to sign in so we can get your contact information needed. Take roll call. We have a new member, Mr. Tanner Cole, so I'd like to welcome him. Mr. Chenus is absent. Mr. Prokobiu is here. Mr. Allison here. And Mr. Bittner is also here.
Do we want to... Not? Would you like to start?
Sure. So I guess the meeting is open, and the first item on the agenda is board reorganization, so I'll take nominations for chair.
Nominate Greg Bittner for chair.
Second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Turn the meeting over to Greg.
Alrighty. We'll take nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Matthew Allison for vice chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
Nominate Ken Chenus for...
We'll go down the...
Oh, yeah. No, I'm sorry. Sorry, you were just asking a general.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Are there any nominations for clerk?
Yes. Nominate Ken Chenus. Kenneth Chenus for clerk.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Do we want to table the reps until the end of the meeting so everybody doesn't have to wait?
Sure.
Alright. We can bring those up under Board Comments, I guess.
We can just put this on hold and come back to it.
Yeah. Alrighty. Is there any public comment from the board?
Welcome, Tanner.
Yeah, welcome, Tanner. Congratulations.
Thank you for stepping up. Is there any public comment from the public not related to any of our agenda items? Alright, seeing none, we'll go right into our first public hearing. 1054 Northfield Road, a scenic road application. The vice chair here to read the public hearing notice.
Sure.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 11, 2018, 6:35 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. to hear and review a request for the cutting of trees and construction of a driveway at 1054 Northfield Road, map 036, parcel 0032, under MGL Chapter 40, Section 15C, scenic road designations, and under MGL Chapter 87, Section 3, cutting of public shade trees. Owners applicants are Brian and Erica Burns, 2 Fay Memorial Drive, Tingsborough, Mass. The application and plans are available for viewing in the planning office.
Is there anybody to speak on behalf of the applicant? Do you mind just identifying yourself for the record, please?
Sure. Brian Burns.
I'm Erica Burns.
What's your address?
2 Fay Memorial Drive, Tingsborough, Mass., currently.
Alright, we've received your application. Would you just like to give us a brief summary of what you're doing and why?
Sure. So, we're building a chalet on that property. It's a two-box modular. To get those boxes in, we are going to need to cut some trees. We noted up to 11 main trees in that area, and a little bit of the stone wall, that's 32 feet. Basically, whatever trees we have to take down to bring it in is what we would take down, not exceeding that amount. And then, we're looking to restore it basically back to what it was. So, put the stone wall all the way back, barring one foot on each side to make it a 20-foot driveway widthwise, and basically replant trees as needed.
Alright. So basically, it's just for construction purposes?
Yes, just trying to get my house in there.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Comments?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just in the interest of disclosure, I own a property at 1083 Northfield Road, and seeing no financial interest in the way this hearing plays out, I don't foresee it being an issue, but I feel like I should disclose it.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many units are the...
Oh, just one.
Just, I mean, just one coming in on a trailer?
There are... Oh, sorry. There are two boxes coming in.
Two boxes.
There are going to be 14 by 54.
Okay.
And they're put together to make one home.
Yeah.
On-site?
Yes, on-site.
Excellent. So there will be two trips that are requiring this?
Yes. In addition to the crane that brings them in.
So, was there any investigation as to the possibility of backing the trailers in, rather than cutting the trees and the stone wall to...
Yeah. So, to get them in, we're unable... Basically, we're unable to back them in because it is somewhat of a skinny road, and the trailer would still not be able to make the swing. And the... From the... When I talked to the crane operator, he basically said, he pointed out which trees needed, would most likely need to come down.
Okay.
Yeah. For full disclosure, we're not trying to cut down, like, we want to cut down as minimal trees as possible. That's why we chose that location.
I read the report. Sounded good to me. You really covered a lot of ground in this. The... You see, the largest tree is F, the 69-inch circumference?
Yes.
Is that right along the roadside, or is that in a little further? Is that the big one you can see in the overhead?
I believe that's inward. Yeah. That is...
Maple on the other side of the stone wall?
I believe it is a maple. Yes. It's a...
I believe that's on the... If you look at the stage when driveway, it would be on this side of the driveway.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, so, yeah, we're not trying to cut that one down. That one's beautiful.
This one would stay. It's behind the...
Oh, okay. That one stays.
Yeah. The area that's, it's like a greenish-yellow, that's where we intend to remove trees for the first stage.
Again, only what's necessary. Was the crane operator close, Matt?
I'm sorry?
Was the crane operator close? Is that what you were doing?
Oh, I haven't looked yet.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
No. My concern is approving the scenic road removal of stone wall and trees for a one-time thing. I just, I can't. I can't imagine that there are alternatives, and not that I'm against at all building a new home, but Northfield Road was the first of two designated in the town for scenic. And it is quite...
Yeah. We will be... So especially the stone wall, like, we're putting all that right back, though, so it should look exactly as it does now.
Oh, you plan to replace the wall?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're not, we don't need that big of a driveway. I don't, I can't afford the asphalt.
And you'll be replanting with, from what your report says, with similar species?
Yeah. Yeah. We want the privacy. We're near the golf course. We want a bunch of trees there.
And that's a one-for-one remediation for every tree you take down?
If necessary. I mean, we talked to an arborist, and they said for, like, old growth, 15-foot is ideal. If you guys want one-for-one, we can do it. I prefer not to agree to that, but if you need it, we can.
I don't... Yeah, I mean, you know. You would caution against that, I think. Because you want to give them proper...
Well, and you don't want to cluster. I mean, you want to take a cluster out and put a cluster back.
Yeah. Yeah, and that is one thing. A lot of these are clustered. There's like, I think there was like seven in one area, and then another, like, four in another, and another, three in another. It's not like evenly spread right now.
And if you look, a lot of them are 8, 9, 11, 5. Those are all newer trees that have probably grown up from droppings. So...
Yeah, I see only like the 69's big, and the, you know, 48 are the two largest ones.
Yeah.
I think, you know, I mean, it does, it staggers the size of the trees over time, but I think with the remediation plan that they have, you know, over time, those trees will grow in, and, you know, the other ones are not going to last forever, so...
Do you know where the property line is?
Left to right, or at the street?
From the street.
From what it sounded like, it was at the stone wall.
Pretty much the stone wall.
Yeah.
So, I mean, Northfield is a wide road in some places, and the pavement is certainly not centered on the layout. So, some people are like, oh, my property line is essentially the edge of pavement. Unfortunately, or unfortunately, their property line is fairly deep off.
So essentially, the land you're working is the town's land.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only part. That's the concern. Yep. It's unfortunately the one part they need to make the radius to pull in.
Yep. And you do have an email from the DPW Director, who serves as the town's tree warden, and he says the large tree on the west side of the driveway is dead or dying, and is going to need to be removed in the relative near future. And he's, he's not excited about the level of cutting that they're looking to do on that side of the road, but he said with replacement, he can, he can support that. Because it gives them the ability to then pull back the tree placement from the right-of-way by a number of feet, and clear that, because you're kind of at the, you're at the beginning of the sag curve.
Yeah.
As you come over the crest curve, and it starts to have a horizontal curve. So just that extra, you know, four, five, 10 feet of site distance with some of the larger trees could be helpful.
I visited the site today, and, you know, in my experience as a landscape contractor, I'd say that most of the trees in that area are not high-value trees. They're younger red maples, and they have co-dominant stems, and...
Yeah.
Most of them are right along the edge of the road, so they've been hit by cars and hit by plows, and they're just... But nonetheless, we are working on the town land, and need to respect it as such.
Sure. And that's the purpose for this approval. The scenic road covers the town's right-of-way and the area off the road, so the remediation plan is intended to make whole the town in some way, or make sure that the scenic vista and the treed road remains as the town would like it.
Alright, well, since this is a public hearing, is there any comments from the public on this matter? Alright, seeing none. Is there any more comments from the board? Questions?
I'd just like to be clear as to what the remediation is, so we're very specific as to, you know, the wall going back, and how many trees, and so on.
And you can include that all in your vote, and, you know, you can choose to phrase it however you kind of want. I mean, I guess you could do numerical number of trees. You could do tree caliper. You could say you're going to match total caliper for total caliper. You know, I don't think necessarily doing a tree count is going to be the healthiest or best way to do it, but, I mean, you can kind of make that decision as you guys see fit.
Did you get a count?
Total count of trees?
Yeah, that you're going to, that you intend to replace?
Oh, that I intend to replace? I don't actually, I... So it would be...
You talk about the 15-foot, right? Yeah, and that makes sense, but...
It would be however many... Again, I'm hoping not to, I want to clear as little as possible.
Yeah.
But the ones we take out, it would be the, say, at most 45-foot to the street is where that stone wall is, and I think it's 100-foot.
It's a total width of the property at the street is 100 feet.
100-foot. So it'd be at most 100, which we're not proposing, but 145, and it's whatever is the 15-foot grid in there.
Okay.
So that'd be...
Looks like there's going to be 17 trees removed in total.
And it looks like 11 of those meet the criteria for needing approval.
Okay.
Because the scenic road requires anything over six inches.
Alright, well, I guess again, unless anybody has any other comments?
Well, without doing the math as to what the driveway takes out, if you have 4,500 square feet, and you space them 15 on center in a grid, you need one tree for every 225 feet, which is roughly 20 trees, minus the section of the driveway. But that's also assuming you have a perfect layout, where the driveway probably isn't an increment of 15 feet from either side, so...
Right, you also have to take up the driveway out of that, did you already...
Yeah, I didn't figure that into the mix, so...
So, we have 11 that are...
The driveway's what, 900 square feet?
Yeah. So we have 11 that are...
They've noted 11 of circumference, yeah.
So... Is everyone comfortable with going with 11?
I have no issue with it. Just want to make sure that they're not placed in an area that's going to cause a future problem, like too close to the road or something.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think your document talks about that, about increasing your site distances.
Right, yeah.
So, I can't imagine they would do that, but do you want to include that? If you look at, on page 6 of 13, they have the proposed remediation plan, and, I mean, if we use that as the basis for our approval, right? And just say that we can approve to this, we can, we approve this remediation plan with the following modification. We want 11 trees. They'll follow the 15-foot radius around each tree. Stone wall will be rebuilt within two feet of the original distances, and additional gardens will be added. Does that sound fair?
Jack could be able to oversee the remediation, just to make sure it won't cause any future problems.
And what you could say is to be planted by the applicant with the final approval of the tree warden. You know, and he's the DPW Director, so you're going to need him to say that you can do the work on the road anyway.
Right, right.
So that, just, it'll all jive once you start replanting.
And I'd just like to add, we should include some sugar maples, because that's what lines Northfield Road for a section of that road.
Yeah.
Any preference to anything, I mean, sugar maples, fine?
Oaks and sugar maples?
Oaks and sugar maples, yeah. And the power lines are on that side of the road, on the westerly side, no, easterly side. And then it crosses, so they can space them back. Most of the trees right along the road have been pruned real heavy anyway, to keep them away from the power lines, so...
I can entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We can deliberate and vote.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So, okay. Include... Do we want any size requirement?
I think...
Viable, how do you want to word it?
Well, generally, when you purchase a tree, they start at 2 1/2 caliper, which is the little sticks that you see. That's, most nurseries that you go to are going to have that on-site, and that's what you pay for, and they plant them. You can start to get larger than that. I think the larger you get, the harder it is to transplant, the less likely they are to be viable, the more expensive they become. I mean, you're not going to, you're not going to get someone to come and drop a 15-foot tree in there for any...
I'd say 2-inch calipers.
Yeah. Calipers, fine.
Should suffice.
A minimum.
2-inch minimum. Sugar maples? And oaks? And what was the other thing?
That's done under the supervision and approval of the tree warden, installation or remediation?
In accordance with the proposed remediation.
In accordance? Done to the satisfaction?
The tree warden.
Tree warden?
But done to the satisfaction and by the approval of?
I would say by the approval of.
Approval.
And really, I think he's approving placement, and, I don't know, Tanner, you can correct me if I'm wrong, most places you buy a tree from are going to give you a year's guarantee once they plant it. So, you know, there would be that winter that they'd get out of it before, and so if it dies, there's the ability to go back to the person who planted it and say, hey, this is dead, you got to come and fix that.
Okay.
What was the last phrase you said about?
In conjunction with... By the approval of the tree warden?
Yeah. In conjunction with the...
Oh, the remediation plan. The proposed remediation plan?
In agreement with?
The proposed remediation wasn't a plan, it's verbiage.
In accordance, that's what you said.
In accordance with proposed remediation.
With the proposed, okay. So you want me to, can I just say? Can I just...
Prove first and then add conditions, or should we...
You can hash out your conditions.
Okay.
So those sound right? So I have four, a total of 11, 2-inch minimum, caliper, sugar maples and oaks, and five, done by the approval of the tree warden in accordance with the proposed remediation.
And I would actually say a minimum of 11. If they choose to plant 20, then I don't think that you should stop them.
Yep.
So if you're, if you're trying to get to the 11 trees that they're proposing that are over 6-inch diameter to remove, then we need to be more, because the 11, you're talking about replacement. So we're approving the removal of 11 6-inch plus diameter.
Seven, we're approving removal of 17 and replacement of 11.
Right.
Because it's 17 that they're wanting to move.
So did we specify the removal?
But only, only 11 fall under the category scenic road because they're over 6-inch caliper. So they're removing even the ones that are under 6-inch caliper, but they're just replacing the 11 that...
I think it's fair to say that they should, they should have to replace the 11, but it's not really fair to say that they have to replace the scrub that they're pulling.
Right, no, I understand that, but do we need to, do we need to specify the approval of how many trees to remove?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's, you're approving their proposal as submitted.
Okay.
And I think what David's trying to get is the conditions marked down of the approval to remove those 11 trees.
Proposed remediation.
Sounds good.
Once those two things. Alright.
We all good with the, what we hashed out? Alright, I'd accept the motion.
Okay. So I move that we accept the...
You approve.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we approve the, what are we calling this?
Removal trees under the scenic road act.
Removal trees under the scenic road act at 1054 Northfield Road with the following conditions. That the proposed remediation be followed and amended to include four, a minimum of 11, 2-inch minimum caliber sugar maples and oaks, and five be done by the approval of the tree warden in accordance with the proposed remediation. Sound fair? You right?
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright. Thank you very much. Thank you, good luck.
Welcome to Lunenburg.
Moving on to our next agenda item is a continuation of the public hearing for 37 Youngs Road, Tri-Town Landing, continued from May 14th. You might, you might be able to take the microphone with you if you want to speak from a distance. It's enough cord.
Go stand over the bathroom, it's enough cord. Pretty pictures.
Could I get your hand in there and get yours ready?
I'm just having a hard time.
Could I use one of those pens? Mine exploded. Are you going to get mad at me?
She will hunch it down.
I'll take it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess Bill Castleton from Great Bridge Properties, I'll just point out that what I just handed you is really just conceptual architectural plans. Site plan was submitted prior to the initial hearing, and then a revised site plan was submitted, whatever that was, a couple weeks ago. And you'll see that over here as well. I'll just, I'll be respectful of your time, I just want to think it would be worthwhile to give a quick recap of this project, what we proposed, what we've changed. Tri-Town Landing site, as you may know, is a large master site, former drive-in theater, and is currently, was initially approved for 204 apartments in six buildings, and those units were intended to have a mixture of 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units in them, as indicated in the ordinance. To date, we've built four of those six buildings, including, which include 131 of those units. So there's two buildings remaining to be built that are currently approved. And I think what is shown up here on the... You do have a red line plan in there somewhere that shows the outline of what's currently approved, so that it can be depicted a little better, or compared to what we're proposing as a modification to that approval. So what we're proposing to do is to eliminate what had previously been labeled as Building 5, and combining that with what is labeled as Building 6, in the center of the site, into one larger building that is to be senior housing, restricted to seniors. That's one thing we have not done on this site to date, is to have a senior component to it. That larger building, from our perspective, is ideal and necessary for senior housing because our goal is to get the amenities that seniors want and need in rental housing into the building. Things like the gathering room, media room, fitness room, management office. We even have an office for supportive service staff, where we have a letter agreement with the Montechusa daycare to come in part-time and help link services for the residents that live there. It was really our goal to get all that into one building, so that our residents did not have to, you know, leave one building to go into another building to use the community room, or to see management. So that was really the motivator behind eliminating Building 5 and making that green space, consolidating not every remaining approved unit, but most of the remaining approved units, all but two or three, into that, into a new building that sits in the center of the site. And our main reason for doing that is just looking at the demographics of the area. Central Mass is aging a little more than the Boston metro area with respect to rental housing. We feel that it's going to be a better balance of housing stock out there, to have a mix, and we think it will serve the community of Lunenburg better as a result. You know, the benefits of impact of that change, given that everything that's unbuilt there currently is approved, and we could just build it, and that's what will happen with that site, if we don't make modifications to it, is that the changes will reduce the bedrooms by, I think, 43% because we're switching to almost entirely one-bedrooms in these remaining units. There'll be some small reduction of impervious surface on the site plan itself. There is, I mentioned the fact it will be diversifying the housing stock. Obviously, things, broader community impacts, like school impact, will be reduced. Yeah, we're reducing the amount of work we're doing in the 100-foot setback to the wetlands because that Building 5 elimination, the earthwork and retaining walls up in the corner of that site, there's a fair amount of that work that's going to be done in the 100-foot setback, and we're now no longer doing that. The rest of the work that we're proposing to combine is in the center of the site. The gray, the gray driveway and parking area is exactly the same path and centerline that is currently approved. So we have a little bit of a reduction in the wetland setback impact. At the last meeting, we had a few issues raised that we wanted to try to respond to as best we could. The issue of parking was brought up, and just want to talk about that for one second, and we kind of went around in circles on it, but there is a waiver in the request for parking, just to clarify. Just to clarify the fact that it really is just asking that the, the ratio of parking that is currently approved at the site be extended and reaffirmed and recalculated, I guess is the way to put it. Um, the current approval has, uh, the parking ratio of one parking space for one-bedroom units, one and a half for two-bedroom units, two, two spaces for three-bedroom units, and then ten visitor spots. So our proposal in the waiver is really to just have that same ratio that's in the current approval extend to what is now a new bedroom mix, because we're now changing up the bedroom mix from what is currently approved. There's, we're not seeking any additional relief on parking, we're just looking for the current approved ratios to be applied to the remaining buildout of the site. The issue of height was raised, um, we'll talk about how we changed that in a minute. We do have a waiver currently on, in the approval for fifty feet. And looking back to ages ago at this point, um, I was reminded that that fifty-foot waiver was part of the rationale for giving it, was that the underlying zoning for the site allowed fifty-foot buildings. Whereas, uh, this is an overlay district, the underlying zoning allowed fifty feet. We asked for that same fifty feet, and we're granted that waiver. So that waiver is in place, and we've made some changes to the design here that we think we could, we, um, have successfully eliminated the need to ask for any additional relief to that waiver, to that height waiver. Um, the last thing that came up the day of our last hearing is the fire lane, and the request from the fire department to add a fire lane, and we'll talk about that in a second. I think we've successfully added that to the plan. Um, since the last meeting, we have, uh, we had a technical review meeting at the planning department. I guess the real, uh, the attendees were police, fire, and building commissioner, if I remember correctly. And I think there was nothing really, um, revealing there, other than the fact that we discussed conceptually how to achieve a fire lane into the center of the site, um, for the fire department. And also, uh, since parking had been brought up, we talked a little bit with the police chief about parking. And, you know, admittedly, he was just from his own recollection, he just couldn't recall there being any problem in that area with parking. And that really was speaking to the fact that the ratio that we want to apply, that is currently approved, that we want to continue to apply on the site, is what's currently built. So we've been experiencing this parking ratio for, uh, since late two thousand and ten. Um, and we have no parking problems on site, we have really excess parking. So we have pretty good experience with what is currently approved, and we just wanna continue that. Um, so that was the tech meeting. I also called the, um, members of the public that signed into our hearing, uh, last meeting, to go over some changes in the plan, uh, that we are proposing here, um, to get, make them aware of what we're doing, uh, to see if it satisfies some of their concerns. Um, I think that was, um, well-received. I did agree, I just wanna make sure it gets on the record here, that, um, you know, one of the issues of concern is just noise and, um, I guess, sight to some degree, but more so noise, and the fact that we, um, you know, this, this side of the site has a pretty thick buffer right now. Uh, you really can't see the abutting houses, but that does thin out during the winter a little bit. I don't think there's a lot of evergreens in there, but, um, we agreed to provide on eleven East Street, um, Mr. St. Lawrence's property, to provide a vinyl fence, six-foot vinyl fence along the back of his property, the length of the property. And then continuing back onto our property, um, roughly running the length of what is labeled as the existing block wall.
Yep.
Um, we're not, you know, we're not gonna put the fence on top of the block wall, we're gonna put it up at a, uh, elevation that, uh, he chooses, so that it can provide, you know, some appropriate visual and sound barrier for, additional visual and sound barrier for him, particularly during the winter, because that is the closest to butter. Um, we have something similar along the entrance to the site, which we installed years ago, that, um, we mainly did for, for headlights, because of people coming in and leaving the site, and that's down at grade. Uh, eleven East Street sits up quite a bit from our site, but this will provide some additional sound and visual barrier for that resident, and we will do that at the beginning of construction, so he has the benefit of it while the property's being built, which might be the noisiest time for a property of this type. Plan changes, we, uh, I'll just say, mention them in, in general, in layman's terms, and Bill Hanigan from Hanigan Engineers here, he can talk about them in a little more detail. We basically, uh, because of the height issue that was raised, uh, we realized that, you know, it wasn't just height per se, we could've gone like to a flat roof and gotten back under the fifty feet, but we realized that wasn't probably the issue that was of concern, it was really the height of the highest floor of living space. So, uh, to put it in artfully, we basically took the same building and, um, crammed it into the ground ten feet. Um, the building, as proposed at the last meeting, was up at grade at the highest point of the site, where the entrance to the building was, and then we were structurally filling underneath the ends of the building to create finished elevation that was bringing that end of the site up by nine, ten feet. So, um, we thought if we could take the whole building and cut it into the hill and drop it down, making the center of the site relatively flat, close to flat, it gave us the opportunity to get the fire lane in there, which was gonna be challenging, um, without that, with the grades we had before. And it also gets the top, the first floor, second floor, third floor, fourth floor, all down ten feet. And you get, the third floor elevation ends up being effectively the same elevation of what we have approved right now, in that same location for a thirds, for a three-story building. So it kinda digs it into the ground. It does create, for us, we had to start going through and shifting, um, if you look at, you probably understand what I'm saying here, but just for the sake of it. I think it's P one oh six? So you can see where the architect, we, we didn't have time to really do threeDs of these, and I apologize for that, but the architect, um, conveys, oh, no numbers, this one. Thank you. The south elevation, so the architect conveys, we're at the entrance, you're basi, you're entering on the second floor of the building. So we have a, a, a first floor that is now subgrade, and being a double-loaded corridor design, on the parking lot side of the corridor now, uh, there is unusable, no-window kinda space, which we've had to shuffle things around in the building in order to make that space useful and still, um, have everything else we needed in the building. So it took some?
So it's subgrade on that side, but on the opposite side, it is not.
That's right. So if you look at, uh, P one oh seven, I believe, with the north and west elevations, that's on the other side of that bill. Um, sorry for the board work. I was all rushed. That's as if you're standing in the middle of the site, where you, the grade of the site comes down to the, the, uh, the middle of the site, the parking and sidewalks do the same as they come around. So you now are in the middle, you are looking at a four-story building, but the first floor is down ten feet, and is now down to, what, three seventy-eight, I think, on, on there? Right, whereas before, it was at three eighty-eight. And you would be looking up a eight- or ten-foot hill, then you would have your first floor, a four-story building. So we've jammed the whole thing down. And to the butter side, you're going to, you know, result, the result will be, as shown on your front cover and on the south elevation, you're effectively gonna have a three-story building look at the entrance. As you come around to the, um, as the legs of the building come out, and you, you weren't, if you're walking on the sidewalk, the elevation starts to gradually drop down. Um, you'll see that we depict here, some three-quarters of the way down the building, we have a spot where, you know, that will be all backfilled and landscaped, just like a three-story building would, just like what's approved now would. Pick a spot, we start to open it up, so that the, the parking lot side ground level is, has some windows in it. On one side of the building, we're giving the maintenance guy his, his office there as, you know, the first kind of, uh, windowed space. On the other side, we have a service coordinator office, and, uh, that then opens up to, um, usable, uh, units. So, um, I think, we think that the changes really respond to what we heard, uh, without just kinda getting gimmicky about messing around with the height, you know, and shallowing out the pitch of the roof. And the forty-four, from the, uh, sill up, the forty-four feet and change to the peak of the roof, again, is effectively what is going to, what would be built there now under the current approval, which is three stories on grade. As a matter of fact, the three-story building we would typically build would be a couple of feet higher than that. The architect had already kinda tried to shallow out the roof here as much as he could, and that's probably gonna leave it a couple of feet lower than we normally would. So, those are the major changes. Other than that, the site layout remains, uh, the same, and it really responding mostly to the fire lane and the elevation and height issues that we, uh, talked about the last hearing. So. Wanna talk any details on the site plan, or you can ask me questions, or listen to what everybody has to say, it's your call.
I'll open it up to questions from the board.
See, if I may just add a couple of points to that, just, um, for some, some numbers, which, this is in our letter, uh, of June fifth, um, just to kind of, uh, illustrate. The ridge height of the original buildings, uh, where, or the original building six, which is where, uh, the, the southerly leg of the proposed building is, that ridge height on the buildings that we've been building on the site would actually be one-point-nine feet higher than the ridge height of the building that we're proposing. So in sense, and like Bill said, the, the roof line was already pulled down, so the, the ridge line of what you're seeing from a, from a neighbor's perspective, you're still gonna see a three-story building. Not that you and I can pick up two feet on a, a three-story building, but two feet would, would be a little bit less than what it is, um, what it was gonna be if, if the original building was built. So that's one of the points of what we're trying to do. I, I do wanna talk about the way that the height is measured according to the bylaw, uh, because I don't want there to be any, um, any misconstruing of what, what's height and what's not height. The way that the bylaw under forty R is written is that the height is measured from the highest point adjacent to the building to the peak of the building. So the highest point adjacent to the building is actually entering in the building on the second floor. Okay? And that's in the front of the building, the side that faces East Street. I'll just. So right here is where the entrance to the building would be, and the picture shows it better, but this actually is entering in now at the second floor. So this is really where the height is measured, from here to the peak. Okay, according to the bylaw. But at the back of the building, you know, this is where we drop ten feet lower, um, on the backside. So from the inside of the site, here, you'll be looking at a four-story building. From East Street and the abutting properties, you'll be looking at a three-story building. And this is the area right in here, where now we build a retaining wall adjacent to the parking to allow this open area, to allow units to actually be constructed on this side of the building. And we do that same thing on this side here. So the distance between the retaining wall and the actual building is between fifteen and twenty feet, depending upon where you are in the site.
That's to allow for windows?
Yes. Yeah, that's, well, that's, but it also gives them, but this, this little bump out is closer, but that's actually the porches. Okay? So there's, there's considerable distance between the building and, and the space, so they'll, there's actually, you know, it means, could be some nice landscaping done in that area. On the lower level, once again, the, the, the whole grade has been dropped. We had, the reserve parking, um, is planned for in here. So with the desire of creating a, a fire lane into the site, we looked at, we looked at coming straight in this way, which would disrupt parking, we looked at coming in, um, perpendicular to the other two buildings. But we decided to basically reconfigure this parking now to build the beginning of the reserve parking. So we lost, um, seven or eight spaces here, we're picking up, um, I guess thirteen spaces right here, so we have a net increase of some, some parking. And then this is gonna be a grass paver system, uh, which will allow the fire department to come in. It's twenty-four feet wide, is what's proposed. Um, and it's, uh, it's a, it's a, a system that allows, uh, the point load of the, of the riggers, the outriggers to come down and actually absorb that, that weight. It is over the drainage system, the drainage system has already been installed. It's, it's, uh, well below grade, it's about seven feet below grade, it is H-twenty loading, so that should be sufficient as well. Um, and that's been installed as part of the previous phase. So the overall aspects that we were trying to address, as, as Bill said, were the view of the building from the abutters. They were, it was approved that they would be looking at three-story, we believe we now have that back to them, looking at three-story. The, um, the fire access to the building for safety purpose, we believe we've addressed that. There was some concern about the parking, um, as Bill said, we're just going for the same ratio that's already been approved, but the ratio's being applied differently because of the fact that the, the unit, uh, configuration is different. In the previous submittal, we had, um, we had dropped the, um, the visitor parking down from ten to four. We've got that back up to ten, um, so that's, um, been held in check. And I just wanna, and I believe that the other, even though we have the, um, we believe we have the, uh, the, the height addressed with respect to the bylaw, there is still gonna be the need of the, of the garden apartment, residential multifamily building of not more than three floors, is still gonna need to be a waiver because we do technically have four stories. But with the fire access to the back of the building, um, the, the, the fire truck with the dimensions and criteria that the chief gave me, relative to angle and distance, um, it can reach all floors from that location in all directions. Obviously, on the backside of the building, front side, they have plenty of room to get for the. So I think, I believe that, uh, addresses most, if not all, of the questions and concerns that came up at the previous meeting. Give any other questions and go through them?
By all means. So, just a, a quick, just sort of set the scene for me here. The parking that we're seeing there is not currently constructed, correct?
This parking right here.
Yep, under current, current conditions, it's not there. Okay.
Nor is this one.
It's all the color.
Okay. Okay.
So the, the areas that are shaded on the, on the plan for our future?
I just wanna make sure we weren't living with that already and saying, yeah, you weren't going with that.
Yeah, there's no, there's nothing in that area right now, except for grass, I believe.
Okay.
Is, sorry to interrupt, but is, and just to piggyback on that, so there is a net gain of parking spaces from the last meeting until?
Yeah, from the last meeting to today, yeah, it's, um, I guess, I guess.
You lost seven and you gained thirteen, or something like that, you said?
Did the redesign, oh, sorry. Did the redesign of the building require you to do any regrading that would impact the storm water management?
No.
Okay.
No. What we did was, we had, as Bill said, in the back of the building, I look at the previous plans, we had a hill in the back of the building that came up to meet the grade, so we were actually gonna have to bring Phil in to do that.
Oh, okay.
Now what we're doing, we've basically just sunk the building down a floor, and so the grades that are out there just need to be reshaped.
Okay.
Yep.
First of all, I'd like to thank you folks for addressing most of the concerns that we had, uh, in such a diligent way. This is, this is a much improved plan, thank you very much. And just to confirm, the access route for the fire apparatus would be, uh, coming in, taking a right, and going around the new building?
Yes.
And was, there was a turning template created?
Yes, this was originally done with a turning template for the, that road has not changed. Um, and so the radii that are around the entire perimeter, and as well as getting into the new, um, access lane has all been checked out.
And that was for the specific ladder truck that we have?
Yes.
Beautiful. Thank you.
And I, I believe, um, there were comments that have come back from the fire department regarding this as well.
There were, and they, they were all positive, and I believe they may be included in your folder this evening.
Yeah, we got them.
You know, and those would be conditions, uh, one and two, from the fire chief's, uh, email, would just be conditions that you'd add to any approval that you made. And it's all kind of standard stuff that you would have if you have a fire lane, similar to the way that they handled the, the fire lane over at Stone Farm. They have to make sure it's clear, they have to make sure that it's posted, so people don't park on it. And I will say, you know, we had the technical review, uh, probably ten days after the last hearing, and by the time that they showed up, they had, um, the framework of all of this worked out. With, you know, some of the details still to be hammered out with discussion with the fire chief and the building commissioner, but, um, they were, they were clear that this was the direction that they wanted to go, and that, um, they had, you know, the majority of it worked out. So, you know, I think you're seeing the result of them, them being willing to listen. So, I think you're seeing the result of them, them being willing to listen to what the board has put forth.
I also appreciate it. Yeah, this is definitely shows that you took us seriously and took the abutters seriously and are moving in, absolutely moving in the right direction. I'm very pleased with it. What was my other question? Oh, what is the actual height going to be? Is it going to be 50 feet or 44? I'm a little confused on that.
Yeah, and I wanted, that's why I wanted to bring that up. When you go to the zoning bylaw, the way that it is worded...
Yeah.
It states specifically, "The maximum height of a building or structure shall be 38 feet, measured from the highest level abutting the building to the highest point of the building." So, if you use that definition, the entrance on the second floor side, which is the side that faces East Street, is 388.7. And the highest point of the building is the ridge line of the roof, which is approximately three, I'm sorry, 432.4. The height of the building therefore will be 43.7 feet, okay, as measured by the bylaw. But I don't want to, I don't want to, I want to be cognizant of the fact that on the lower side of it, there's an extra 10 feet.
Correct.
Okay? But the way the bylaw is written, that's how it's measured, and that's what we went with both with the original plan as with these.
So, would have, right. So, it would have measured off of the original plan, it would have been the same?
Yes. I think this is actually, I think we figured out this is actually shorter by almost two feet.
So, yeah.
Yeah. As measured by the bylaw.
Yeah.
But I don't want it, I don't want it to, I don't want someone to come back later and say, "Wait a minute, we didn't know that that, that the distance between floors didn't change and stuff like that."
No.
If you go from the backside, if you physically measure from the backside up, it's taller.
Yeah.
You know, but the way we, the way the ordinance is written, or the bylaw is written, we do comply.
No, I totally understand that. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that it was, you know, the other concern would be, like I said, if you had brought Phil in, you know what I mean, and changed the...
Right.
That would have, obviously, kind of like cheating.
Yeah, no, no. If you look at the, if you look at the rendering, which is based, the rendering is actually based upon our, I think our task will only create the rendering based upon that. So, as you can see, the grade around the front of the building is essentially, you know, level with the parking lot throughout that whole area.
And if you go out there today, as you get to the end of the already paved area, you can see the grass does start to go uphill toward the wetland, which then levels off and then goes back uphill towards East Street.
Mm-hmm. What about clearing snow on that paver system?
Yeah, that's going to be a requirement that we'll have to, it's going to, they do make rubber snow blades, but what will probably end up happening is that that will be cleared, the parking lot's cleared with regular plows, and then that would be cleared either with, like a, you know, something like a Kubota with a, with a smaller thing. You know, they have them for soccer fields, I know, to be able to clear the snow off soccer fields, so.
And now, your intent for that to be turf, then?
Yeah, it's grass. Yeah. Yeah, it's not synthetic, but it's grass. It's the honeycomb paver systems that, they're plastic, and you put loam inside, you seed it, and it looks like grass. You mow it, just like grass. Kids can play on it, just like grass, and then, and then from there, the, it has to be kept clear during the winter months.
And your intention, or maybe I mistook you, is that's going to eventually, if needed, that will become...
That's the, that's...
The reserve park.
Yeah, that's the same layout as the, well, it's not the same layout, let me just... Similar layout to reserve parking.
Okay.
So, the reserve parking comes out like this, so what we probably have to do is work, work something in here. It might be that we'd have to add a parking against the building.
Mm-hmm.
We have to. But based upon the experience that Bill's talked about with the parking and that they've had, we don't really, we hopefully will not have that need.
Okay.
Yep.
And, oh, yeah, internally. So, your intention is to keep the community rooms, the shared space, is going to be the space that's up against the higher elevation?
I'll let Bill take that.
Right.
Yeah, I could just explain quickly. Obviously, these are conceptual plans, but they should be pretty close. What we did to make use of that, I guess we call it a dead space, which is almost like basement space on that lower level, we had a two-story media room up on the third and fourth floor. We decided that really didn't need to be two stories. So, we took that, where that's going to be on the third floor, a media room, on the fourth floor, a, the fitness room. So, we did some other shuffling around here. This basement space is going to be tenant storage now, and there was a stairwell in the corner of the building, which we talked to the building commissioner about, because we had stairwells at the end of each building. And our architects said that third stairwell is not needed by code. So, we were able to remove that, and that way, it kind of freed up the corner of the building, so that the upper floors that were above grade could be reshuffled, and elevator location's basically the same. And then, as you come down the lower floor level, you know, we have some other apartments that have, you know, kind of like big window well kind of things. And, you know, if the, if the retaining wall is at least enough distance from the deck and the windows, especially on the brighter side of the building, that's really not an issue on the, what is it, east side or the south, southeast side kind of?
More south.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the south side, the retaining wall's a little closer, but the retaining wall will be lower there, because the grade drops quicker on that side. So, we feel very comfortable with the very ends of these legs of the building becoming units, whereas everything up towards the corner is other internal uses.
Good.
It's not ideal. I mean, we, obviously, any architect, you know, always start out not wanting any subgrade space, because you just got to deal with that, you got to make sure it's done right, and...
Compromises.
Yeah, exactly. So, we're, but we're happy to try to make something that works here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are there any more initial comments from the board? Not, I'd like to hear, I see several abutters in the audience, if they'd like to come up and have a chance to speak on their own behalf. If you could just identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, everyone. Steven St. Laurent, I'm butto on 11 East Street. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Castleton for meeting with us. We're very pleased with the changes they made. I'm actually surprised that they went through such an effort. Depressing the building into the ground answers our main concern. It will look much better, not have that upper level looking into our yards. And also, agreeing to do the fence behind my property and on their property allays all of my concern about noise and dirt from the construction and all of those things. So, I'm very happy, and I appreciate the board for the meeting. It's really solved all the issues for me, so I'm happy.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to the board, then.
I'm pretty sure that there's already there under the dark scratch compliance, right?
Yeah.
Those buildings?
Yeah.
So, I appreciate you guys listening to our comments and making modifications, not just to satisfy our concerns, but the abutters as well. That's the main reason that we sit up here, is to protect them. So...
Adam, could we have the comments that came back? I know that they've been entered in, that the board members have participated, if we could just redo them to the public?
From the, yes, from the fire chief?
Yes.
Sure. He was. So, the fire chief had three initial comments. The first one was, the fire lane needs, there needs to be fire lane marking in the reserve parking area to maintain access to the fire lane. In general, they would not be in favor of gating that road. The fire lane would need to be kept clear year-round, all the way to the end, i.e. snow plowing in the winter. And he suspects a gate would impede that, and it would need to be spelled out somewhere, which would be a condition. And then, finally, he questions the width of the fire lane, and it is 24 feet, and he felt that that was entirely sufficient.
Mr. Chair, through the chair.
Sure.
Should we address the, you want to address the waiver request?
Sure.
First?
So, there's, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven waivers.
All right, find them.
Yeah, they're in the, the new...
They're in the June 5th letter.
June 5th letter.
And many of them are, I think, the applicant called them pass-through or continuations. And they do change some of the calculations, but they're following on to what is already approved.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we've already identified that we have the authority to approve any of these that we see fit.
Do we really have to address building height? Since it's already, they've already got their waiver, correct?
Well, they're modifying the plan, so they're modifying it, so you're creating a new building, even though it's...
So, you have to re...
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what they're doing is being cautious, and I think that, you know, where the abutters are comfortable with it, the board seems comfortable with it, where it's a continuation of the same ridge line, it would be, I think, smart to just include it as, as part of what you're doing in, in the modification and the update.
Okay, and this is redone to reflect that, 43.7 feet?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they were approved for 50 feet. The underlying was 38 feet.
Yeah.
And that was my main concern, is that they were already given relief from the 38 to 50. So, I thought that an increasing building height was a little...
Well, I have, all right, I have, so I'm looking at them. I got no problem with the first, one, two, three, four, five.
And the underlying is 55.
55.
Commercial?
Oh, 55.
Show me one bedroom. I guess I should have a few bedrooms. Anyone have a problem with the one, two, and three-bedroom unit?
Is the seat, is the, is the age restricted similar to the rental, where you get 100%?
Yeah, whether it's age restricted or not is irrelevant, it's the fact that it's rental, not sale, where you get 100% of it. 40R, the legislation in general says that a project can't be wholly age-restricted. So, when the board wrote this bylaw, they included a clause about age restriction in there, but where 65% of the project is not age-restricted and family, this is only a portion, so it wouldn't interfere with the state legislation for it. It allows you to do it in, you know, a limited sense within the project.
So, is this actually increasing our affordability?
It will, yes. All 70 units will count towards our subsidized housing inventory.
I guess I have a question in regards to that. So, if they can't find, which I hope they don't have a problem finding people to fill these that are age-restricted, can they open up to unage-restricted? So, say...
Yes, because you're not requiring them to age-restricted. It's a voluntary restriction that they're asking you to grant them a waiver to be able to do.
Yeah.
I, I think that over the past two or three years, it's become apparent that our ability and need to construct senior housing aren't necessarily keeping up with each other. So, this will hopefully provide some ability for people to remain in town when they can't or don't wish to maintain a house any longer.
Right, no, I'm 100% in favor for that reason. My concern is that we grant an approval based on age restriction, and then they just say, "Okay, we'll open it up to anybody." Not to say that their intentions are ill, but it just seems like there could be a loophole there.
You know, I think, could they do that? I don't think there's anything that would. I think that the project applicant certainly could agree that you condition that they age-restrict it without, you know, and if, if they are unable to fill it, then it would require a modification. Having dealt with Great Bridge, I think they're probably one of the better developers and managers of property that come in and do what they say. And honestly, 70 one-bedroom, or 63 one-bedroom units, even if for some reason they became unage-restricted, you're not going to be flush with children or otherwise with one-bedroom units. You know, people, people need their space. But I also think the design of the building and the tone of the building project would certainly give single individuals pause who would want to live there without having need or want to be part of that kind of community.
Guess my other question to the applicants is, have you reached out to our local senior community to see, not that they'd be given favor, but I'd like to see our, the seniors in town be able to take advantage of this, because they grew, they pay taxes here for so long and have lived here for so long that I don't want to see it filled up, not that I don't want to see it filled up, but with people from other communities, and then our seniors that live locally don't have a place to go.
Yeah, so, right now, we did, before we really got too far with this concept, we did go meet with the council on aging and spoke to the board and presented some version of this conceptual plan, and they were obviously extremely enthusiastic about it and supportive and expressed that. There is a local preference in the approval for this site. So, on a, on a phase-by-phase basis, we have to produce a tenant selection plan, include a local preference in there, and support why that local preference is needed, and that's part of the 40R process. So, that local preference will be in there until someone tells us it can't be. I guess that's kind of the approach they take with local preference approval, under 40R or 40B even, it's the same thing. But that, that's the starting point, is to have that local preference in our tenant selection plan.
All right, great.
I went through the chair. I went and talked to Sue Doherty of the Eagle House about whether or not they would be doing any outreach, and she said that they would, they would be talking to the, you know, newcomers down there and inviting them to get involved at the center of town. There is the, you can request a ride, and they'll send the van out. It's very affordable if they need to get up into this area. There's also two runs, I believe, two runs a week for grocery shopping. So, I was talking to a friend in town who was concerned about those kinds of things, about whether they would feel isolated way out there, you know, because of the location, or whether they could feel, you know, a bigger, a part of the larger community. And I'm assured that if they want to, as much as they want to, they can get in touch with the rest of the community.
All right, excellent. I see someone that wants to public comment. Go ahead.
This entire project was based on the premise that it was senior living, and I, we totally agree with Mr. Bittner. We can't just, okay, we can't fill them, so we're going to put anybody else in there. The whole entire, all of the changes, all of these things that we've been talking about now are based on the idea that it's senior living. If they're going to change that, then this, I feel there should be some sort of approval process that we change that. But not having that requirement kind of negates everything that we've been talking about.
My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, because we've been through this before with modeling, that we cannot force them to choose a business model for there, correct? But you can't, I mean...
Correct. I mean...
You can condition that they come back for a change in business model, you can't force them to accept one model versus another.
Well, that would be owner versus rental.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think, you know, this would be most analogous recently to the solar project and the pilot, and whether conditioning the pilot is legal or not. Can you foist upon someone, "You have to do this"? No. If you have an agreement, the condition can be worded in a way that it's memorializing the agreement that, you know, the board requested that the applicant seek approval prior to renting to anyone not within the age restriction the applicant agreed. That gets memorialized as a condition, it passes the 20-day appeal period, it becomes part of the approval, and thus, that happens, as opposed to the board saying, "These must be always and forever age-restricted units," which would be sort of contrary to the concept and the legislation for 40R. So, again, I, you know... So again, I, you know, having dealt with Mr. Castleton, having talked to him about this project for, it's probably been a year now, Bill, you know, I don't think he has any intention or, you know, desire to do anything but this based on the market as it exists, the development as it's happening in the general area. But you, you may want to pose that question to him, get his response, and then just memorialize that in, in the, the approval.
Is that something that you think we could possibly condition?
Yeah, our, um, we have no problem with any condition indicating that the building, because we're only building one building in particular, we're already going to be bombed by federal fair housing law. Our age is the only discrimination you're allowed to do in housing, is to, you know, create elderly or senior housing, excuse me. So our intention, there's several different variations of that. So our intention is to have all residents of each unit be 55 or older. There are variations on that, where you could have, you know, one resident be 55 and older and others under, but we're not interested in that. So we want this property, we're going to finance it and market it as a 55 and older, all-residence property. So any restriction that's straightforward, we certainly are fine with. Because we, we can't mix the building up. Once we, once it's a senior building, it's not like we can decide, you know, to rent the rest of the units, because that would violate fair housing law. And if we want to not do senior housing, we wouldn't have this design. So we're, we're fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Did the original approval speak to snow removal?
My guess is not.
Yes.
Well, I'm sure it's a...
Snow removal was one of the things that came up during the original project way back when. And basically, the way the snow removal is handled is that all the snow and regular storm events are pushed to the side, windrow plowing, clearing, general typical snow plowing operations for a parking lot in a residential apartment complex. There, there is the ability in certain locations to put stockpiles of snow. And should you get, so that's, that's the normal stuff. But if you have multiple storing vents that have, create huge piles and start impacting the ability to, for people to park, start impacting the visit, the visual ability of people to maneuver around, then it becomes a safety issue. And at that point, snow removal has to happen where they come on the site and actually take the snow in its piles off the site, dump trucks or whatever, and bring them to, you know, the appropriate disposed facility for snow. So that's basically the snow removal operation that has been in place since day one. There's not been too many years that we've needed to do snow removal of a site. But it is, it is, the mechanism is there.
You also have a giant field right now that will soon be all parked.
So, so, so it may be that the board reinforces the mechanism on this approval by saying, you know, should areas become obstructed either by visibility or loss of parking, that the snow be removed from the site until, until it's satisfied.
Excellent, thank you. Now, has, has, is it, is it an option for you folks to stockpile it on the proposed green space?
I would...
It would depend upon what's in the green space, yeah.
What do you plan for that green space? That was my question, sorry.
Our attention for now is to probably make a public, uh, community gardens, which we've done in other developments. And what we do with that is usually do garden boxes for seniors. So those come in during the winter. So that whole area is not going to have any structure, anything to prevent us from storing snow there.
So then, then it is a possibility for stockpiling?
Up in the corner, it's...
So it doesn't necessarily look like there's any extra drainage to catch the, the melting in the spring from stockpile, potential stockpiles?
Yeah, I was...
I'm just thinking, I remember last winter or the winter before, the Civic Center down in Fitchburg had like 10 feet of snow in, in a huge portion of the parking lot because of the excessive amounts.
Well, I would, you want to answer that?
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the snow melts slowly typically. So it would be able to be, it would melt off the site, either get into the ground, or if it went into the parking lot, it would then get to the catch basins and go into the drainage system. It's a, we're very fortunate to have a lot of sand up there. And there's catch basins actually just to the west of that area, right? But that's the first set of catch basins on the, on the system, so those would drain down into the infiltration area.
Yep.
So that would all go through that process there.
Just making sure you guys thought of it.
Thank you.
Honestly, we hadn't, but I, we had the answer.
Good answer.
Through the chair, so... That, should we include the 55 and over as, should we somehow, you know, melt that in with the housing affordability waiver? Or do this separately at the end?
I would do it separately as a condition.
So can we get back to the waivers and maybe do an approval or look for an approval?
Care to make a motion?
I'm going to wait a second until my colleagues have had a chance to read through. And not too enormous, Nicole, you're, you weren't here for the first, yeah, so, so.
Is he eligible for the vote?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought.
He is eligible to participate, but not to vote.
He's not eligible for the moment?
He was not a member of the board at the time of the hearing.
What do you make comment?
Yeah, he can, he can participate fully in the, in the hearing. He just can't vote.
Okay. So we would need a...
You'd need a...
Need an amazote tonight? Are the, so is the main entrance going to be in the corner of the building, and that's where all the access?
The main entrance is the same.
Is there going to be any access other than emergencies through the other ends, or is that going to be?
There are doors, which I'm, I, I guess, as far as security getting in and out of the building, I, I'm not sure how that's going to work, though.
Well, I guess my other is just concern is like the handicap accessibility, because all your handicap spots are in the, near the main entrance, and if people are going to be going in and out, then...
The, you talk about handicap accessibility of all the doors?
Right, right.
So there's really three ways into the building?
Right, right. So if there are, all the handicap spots are near the main entrance, if a handicap person lives towards one of the end of the wings, then they're going to have to... They're close to the door, but they're probably far from their apartment, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah. The, we could spread them around. Usually we, we do cluster them towards the front of the building.
Right, right.
Because another, you know, fair housing design issue is to not cluster your handicap units, the ones that you were equipping as handicap units. So often, they'll end up on upper floors. Which seems illogical to some people, but we've gotten pushback for putting them all in down, down on the first floor. So often, it's more using the elevator. So that's why we just usually cluster the handicap, you know, parking spaces.
I had raised this concern at the initial meeting, just that, yeah, you have a minimum requirement needed, but for a facility of this nature, it may benefit you to have more. And that's something you can probably address in the future if there's somebody...
Yeah, no, we...
There's no reason you can't add more than what's required, so.
I, I believe we actually have more than are required.
Yeah.
But the other factor, when you're talking about handicap accessibility, is the parking lot slope can't be greater than 2%. So when you extend down towards the southwest, that slope increases above 2%. So we couldn't put handicap parking spaces there. And the same thing on the, on the, on the other wing as you get further down. It's a little bit flatter on this side, but the main entrance, the main entrance to the building is right here. We did have, we have this area right in front here, which is potentially for pickup and drop-off of people. Might be a bench, et cetera, in there. The little garden area located in this area here. So this is really the focus of the, of the front entrance of the building, and that's where all the handicap parking spaces are in the 2% range. But then we needed more, so we added them across in this area here, and they could then go to the door and, and get in that location there. This door here is at grade and is handicap accessible out. This door is at grade as well, but there are stairs in this location. But the, the building code, and I don't know exactly how it's worded, but there's evacuation space within each stairwell. Okay, that's for safety purposes, so that they can get handicapped, someone whose handicap could get into the stairwell area, and that's a, considered a, an evacuation space by building code. So then, if you get them away from the building as well, you know, that's even better. So that's why we didn't put the stairs coming right out of the building. We wanted to have enough of a sidewalk to go away from the building to some degree for that purpose.
And are those spaces, any of those van accessible?
Yes.
Like the, the Mark Van Gommers thing?
The ratios are all to meet the, the handicap accessibility rules.
So, just your view?
The waivers, yeah.
Motion, I motion that we accept... Do you want me to read every waiver off, or just the waivers as...
You can read them as requested.
The waivers as requested.
If you, if you're doing them all as a package.
Yeah, I think of the package, it's fine.
I would agree with that. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so...
So this is just site plan approval, so simple majority?
Correct.
So we're good.
Do you want to...
Yeah, I was, um, well, before we close the public hearing, I just want to make sure this is kind of the speak now or forever hold your peace moment for the public. If anybody, please, by all means.
Hi, Susan Doherty, Director at the Council on Aging. Thank you very much. This is a long time coming for Lunenburg. We know people who live down at Trytown right now. As a matter of fact, one of our board members lives there. And she just raves about how the, the building is managed. There's no trouble down there that, you know, she has seen. And we just think the Council on Aging is behind this 100%. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Will we close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So now we can discuss...
Yeah, the conditioning. We have, uh, what do I do with my notes? We have age.
The gate on the fire lane.
Access becomes obstructed by snow. Snow removal will be, right, stockpiled. We have the fire lane.
Construction hours.
Construction hours.
Is there still active construction taking place on site?
Currently, no.
No?
Not, uh, 2015.
Okay.
When you guys got your occupancy for building four, 2015.
How did you want to word this?
Was it 16? Okay.
Should access become obstructed by snow all?
Pretty sure. I think it was first quarter 2015.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it, there's been active construction on site for at least two years, if not longer.
Yeah, but we're also concerned about the fire lane area, right?
Quickly look at the old approval, just to see what the construction hours were, or was that made? Yeah, I don't, this is a...
There might not be any construction hours.
I don't think there was, because this is a... I don't remember seeing one.
I'd be pretty surprised if there was.
Really? Including, I'm going to say including...
I don't remember fire lane in there.
Shall be kept clear? Obstructed.
What do you, what's the recommendation, do you think, for that area?
Physically and visually, because, I mean, you could have 10-foot piles and can't see around.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Probably say five Monday to Friday.
Eight to 12 on Saturday.
Yeah, it will matter returning, but we've got that stockpile.
Snow removal shall be kept in a manner that allow a safe egress and access to fire.
To the site?
Yeah, I guess. I'm not quite sure. I would think, something like that. I'm trying to figure out the conditions for this.
You tell us what you want, we'll word it, and you guys will get a crack at reading it beforehand.
Okay. Vital areas, including parking, fire lanes, access points, shall be kept unobstructed by snow. But we also want to fit in there somehow.
Physically and visually.
Physically and visually.
Unobstructed.
Uh, so that, you know, you, we're trying to get at is you can, you can access the site and drive around the site safely without huge snowpiles, you know what I'm saying? Obstructing sightlines.
And...
Get a little head nod.
Yeah, you got a head nod, I guess.
The other one is 55 or older, and maybe Greg can speak to that, if you have something in mind.
Well, just in regards to what Adam said to memorialize the agreement that prior to renting to someone outside of the age constriction, that we have some sort of review, or, I mean...
Yeah, and again, just tell us the general gist of the conditions, and we'll, we'll write them in a...
If you decide to not be 55 and over, then we'd like to re-review the project, kind of?
The applicant has agreed that they will be renting to...
55 and over?
55, 55 and over, and any alteration to that, would, they would seek board approval.
Sounds good to me.
And that's...
That works.
Are you going to be, are you going to be, are you saying that you're going to write these up offstage and come back at the next meeting with these, or you're going to...
Well, I mean, for, we'll, we, the same that we do with the...
Before we sign the decision.
Before you sign the decision. I mean, the conditions are, you guys generally give us conditions. You say, these are the things we want conditioned.
Okay.
And what you say in the hearing isn't exactly what gets written in the decision. But the spirit, tone, substance of that, you're, you're telling us what you want. You don't need to wordsmith it out to, you know, to the colon in order for us to be able to...
So we'll do a generalized approval with conditions?
Yes, with these conditions. And then, you know, if we wordsmith it and you're like, well, that, that sounds weird, email us back and we'll change it.
Yep, that's fine. Just didn't know what your process was going to be tonight.
Same process as every other night.
Okay.
So we need construction hours. You mentioned the, the gate, the gated access?
Uh, yeah, in Sully's letter, it's no gate on the fire lane.
So, I mean, no gate shows on the plan, so I don't think you need to condition that they don't put something.
Okay.
Generally, the condition would be either not removing something or placing something.
This is a new one. I mean, what are the construction hours typically like on this? Because it's, I mean, you have...
I mean, they're, they're working on an, an active site where people live. I, I mean, I would think it'd be analogous to working in a residential neighborhood. So I would say something like eight to five Monday to Friday, you know, eight to 12 on Saturday. And, you know, that's for the outside construction hours. Once they get into the building, you know, you're talking site work kind of construction hours. And I know you're going to tell me contractors like to start working at seven o'clock.
No.
But, you know, you have, you have a single-family abutters, and you have a, you know, 133 units of, of other living that's happening there.
Through the chair, can we hear from the opponent?
To, to Adam, I just wanted to, just to, I believe that a lot of these other conditions that you're talking about have already, that the permit still is valid.
Correct.
So there's some of these things, such as hours of operation and, and snow removal, have already been addressed through the original permit. And if not, I think your, your stuff will cover that. But I believe that the hours of operation is one of the things that were covered in the original permit.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I see they addressed the removal, but it remain under private ownership. Do we have an operational and maintenance agreement?
I'll have that with me.
Yes. Oh, they do have construction hours, number 23.
What are they?
Seven to six Monday through Friday, eight to six on Saturday. Wow. Except for concrete work not completed during the daytime hours with notification to the planning board. So, I mean, you can pull all of the existing conditions forward and then add any, any new... new conditions. And really, at that, at that point, the new conditions would be the age restriction agreement, the clearing the snow and other debris from the fire lane, and the signage for the fire lane. Because construction hours, snow removal, all of that stuff is included in the existing approval.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the construction hours, but that was originally, so they didn't have three buildings of people living there when they approved those hours.
Well, there's four buildings of people living there, but the neighbors still existed.
Right, right, but that's what I mean.
In theory, these people pay them rent, so this is the longest their construction hours would go. I imagine, you know, if every day 10 people came and told them that they were bothering them with the construction hours, they would most likely amend them. But if you want to strike that condition and give them new construction hours, that's certainly your prerogative.
I mean, Saturday seems a little long, 6:00 p.m. to me.
Yeah, what was it?
Originally, it was 7 to 6, Monday to Friday, 8 to 6 on Saturdays, except concrete work not being completed during daytime hours.
Six to one, get the job done faster, or?
All right. No, I understand. And that's when they were doing, you know, an abundance more of site work with stomping and...
And I'll be honest, a lot of these, a lot of construction doesn't happen on Saturdays just because it costs you twice as much.
I'm not so much concerned with the weekend. Seven to what during the week?
Seven to six.
Seven to six.
Yeah, I mean, that's, if that's what they gave them for starters, can we just leave it?
So do we wanna word it somehow like, including but not limited to the existing conditions, and then itemize our additions?
I would suggest that you note that all existing conditions from the January 31st, 2007 approval carry forward, and new conditions as follows, something to that effect. Or with the additional conditions of.
Can you think of any others?
Summer Street being rebuilt is not gonna have any impact or be impacted? Construction vehicle?
For truck accessibility and stuff like that?
Do we have a construction vehicle preferred access?
We don't. You know, Young's Road isn't the most inviting road to drive a construction vehicle down. And, you know, I imagine soon neither will Summer Street, so...
And you're not even supposed to take a left out of there to go up Young's Road. There's a no, there's a no-left turn sign coming out of the development.
Oh, well, I also imagine that, and if I recall correctly, when they built Building 4, the majority of their traffic wasn't going through the site anyway. It was coming up around the back of the buildings along their service road, which is gated, which you can see on the very bottom of the plan, below the two buildings. It accesses back up to the dump and it follows the former dump, and it follows out around the other two buildings. So they could, and I imagine they would, bring their construction traffic around the buildings into the undeveloped portion of the site, because driving through that parking lot would, would just, and they'd be repaving the whole thing in no time.
If I recall correctly, that access road was actually the town's, wasn't it?
I think it was written into that we had use of it.
I think the town has an easement over it, but I believe it's a portion, I believe it's owned by Tri-Town.
It's outside of the property line. Outside what appears to be the property line. Oh. I apologize, I was looking at the wrong property line.
Yeah, no, that's, that's totally within their property.
Good.
They've got the flared end section, that's where their sewer dumps out. They've got multiple drain manholes.
So the backside was off their property. Neither here nor there, I was curious about Summer Street reconstruction.
Yeah, I would, I would, it's gonna have as much impact on them as it would have on anybody else who drives in that general area for the next two years.
This should be done within the next two years.
I think that all depends on financing. I mean, when I, when I started working here in fall of 14, they had, I think, just dug the foundation hole for Building 4. And so it was 14, 15 months later that they got their building permit, or their occupancy permit.
For half the size.
And I don't think that the size necessarily has anything to do with it. I think there's probably gonna be some financing and some, you know. I think there's a little bit more site work that goes with this building than, than some of the other ones they've done.
I'd like to include something, just boilerplate about the lighting, exterior lighting, that it be dark sky compliant. Or, you know, the code that everyone used, I don't know what you used there.
Yeah, I'm good with the ones he spelled out on top of what we had existing. The only thing was the construction hours, but everybody else is fine with it, I'm good with it.
Do you think they should be shorter? Or cut out Saturday?
I don't want, cut out Saturday, I'd say maybe till 4:00 instead of 6:00.
On Saturday?
Yeah. That's just me.
I mean, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, as, as it's been stated, everybody's a renter, so it's still...
Right. I'm ready for a motion if somebody's willing to make one.
Are we keeping the hours as is, then?
I'd like to change them to 4, but that's just me.
I would be open to changing them to 4, but...
Just Saturdays.
Just Saturdays, okay.
Was it 10, 10 to 4, 8 to 4?
Eight to 4.
Eight to 4, okay. You ready for a motion?
I am.
How are we wording this thing?
I would move that you're going to approve the modification to the site plan for Tri-Town Estates with all conditions carrying forward, with the exception of Condition 23, which will be modified per your modification, and the addition of the four conditions that you've added.
So moved.
And those four conditions being...
That's easy.
Those conditions being age restriction, the fire lane being kept clear of debris and snow, fire lane signage at the reserved parking, and all exterior light being stark, lighting being dark sky compliant, not dark star.
Yes.
It's a whole different story.
It's a whole different story. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I wish everybody was as responsive as you folks have been.
Yeah, nice job.
All right, moving on. So we have an appointment with the MRPC, permitting guidebook discussion.
Good evening.
Aye.
Good evening, thank you for being so patient.
Yeah.
I understand how these work. Thank you for time on your agenda tonight. Karen Chapman, Principal Planner at Monmouth City Regional Planning Commission. We're doing a district local technical assistance project for Lunenburg to do a permitting guideline book. We did a project last year to facilitate the business-town partnership. I saw all of you at the meetings, so you're aware of that. Part of the final report on that project, there were recommendations, and one of them was to create a permitting guidebook. So that's why I'm here, to talk about what kinds of things you want. I had sent some samples, I hope you all got to look at them, and...
I did.
Sort of wanted to get your feedback.
I liked the Shirley one best.
'Cause it has pictures?
It was easy to go over these with my crayons.
So, yeah, I completed the Shirley one last year and, you know, met with the planning board several times of, you know, exactly what they wanted in it. And they wanted to focus on development for both residents and for developers. And so I put in things like fences and things that the resident would wanna know what to do, but also the processes for, for developers. And the...
Yeah, I like the way that it was organized.
Okay.
It just seemed to, I mean, just in my, my mind, it seemed to follow a logical, you know, if I was coming into town, it would, it would answer all my questions in a logical order. And I like all the extra, you know, all the contact information is there.
Yeah, some of them put, you know, they do it by department, but they put all the information together in the department, and then something like that one, it explains what the department does.
Yeah.
And then there's a separate contact list.
Yeah.
And then we also did the appendices, sorry, appendices that have a use matrix and a permit matrix.
Yep. Like all that, the only part that I, I kinda was like, eh, is the, the question and answer, the facts. It just seemed like, I don't know, like too early in the process to stick it in the front, you know what I mean? Would have liked to have seen it later on, but...
Specifically something they wanted to add?
I think it's helpful.
Yeah, it is helpful.
I mean, for, for...
Placement of it.
Someone who's not familiar with the process, like residents, it shouldn't be a scary process. Some people think the building inspector is gonna come condemn my house if I haven't come over, and it's, that's certainly not the case, especially, I mean, if you've ever met Gary, he's the most agreeable guy, you know, he's approachable.
I think the, the strategy on that was, they may get their question answered right there in the facts, so they don't have to...
Yep.
Go through the whole thing.
Okay, that was just a feeling that I had.
Right, that's fine.
And the only other thing that I would caution is the, um, these are, toward the back, you have the...
Flow charts.
Flow charts, yeah. And our flow chart for the special permit process, I'd be different from the state's because our timeline is a little...
And that's perfectly fine, we wanna do what Lunenburg wants, not...
Okay.
And this is the first time, this is the first time Karen talked to anybody about this, you know, we've had, Karen and I have had a little bit of discussion about this, but I mean, this is just sort of to introduce you guys and get a flavor of, of what you want.
Yeah.
And as we, as you give her ideas on, on what you'd like to see, her and I will work together on, on what she's, how she's gonna lay it out, what she's gonna do, and, and we'll make sure that we get that little idiosyncrasy out of it.
Yeah, that's all, I'm just cautioning about that, 'cause, you know, you don't wanna just stick that in there and be misleading people.
Just to be general, I'd like for it to be easy to follow for residents, which I think the Shirley one is. Again, I, there's a lot of questions. And again, I don't like the fact that at times we have developers in the business for 30 years coming in and claiming ignorance towards the process at times, and it's like, well...
Yeah, it's a nice tool.
It's like they wait for us to miss something, and it's like, that's not how it should be, it's, so... Any comments, Tanner?
I just, in some of the areas, I'd like to see it be a little bit more specific, like at the beginning, you talk about, you know, sheds of a certain size might require a permit. Like it should spell out that a shed over 200 square feet requires a building permit, and that way it fully answers the question.
Right.
That's all, try to be as specific.
Without rewriting the bylaw.
Yeah. So, I just, I mean, my experience in construction, I do hold my construction supervisor license tells me that the code book is just a mess. And so for a happy homeowner that wants to put a shed in their backyard, it'd be nice to have something like this where they can say, "Hey, right here, as long as it's factual."
Right.
It's in line with everything.
Right, right.
I'd prefer they refer to this than go to the Facebook for deciding where they can, whether they can or cannot build a shed.
And I think, and without reading every word in the document, I think a lot of the trouble homeowners have with some of their small projects have to do with, like, lot lines, and they put things too close, and they don't respect the setback, so it'd be nice to be able to at least bring that up.
Make that maybe one of the, the pictures, you know?
All right, 'cause they do have the ability to seek relief for leg side setbacks through the ZBA, it's nice that they know, even, even for appeals of projects that are going in next to them, a lot of people don't know they have the ability to appeal the decision, I mean...
I just feel like, I see a lot of homeowners that like to tackle these little projects, and those are the things we need to be a little more specific on. Obviously, if you're gonna put a two-car garage on, you're gonna have an engineer and you'll know your lot lines and so on, but for the person that wants to put a Reed's ferry shed in their backyard...
You'd be surprised.
Yep.
I also think, you know, and I, I apologize, I haven't read any word, every word of it either, but I think the idea of being able to measure with 100-foot tape as opposed to surveying to get that distance is an important distinction that I know I deal with a lot. People come in, they're like, "Oh, it can be this far." "Oh, good, I got 100-foot tape, I can figure that out." And, yeah, okay, you can, but it's not necessarily gonna be accurate. And I, sort of to the same degree.
Is there, is there any mention in here of a button notification?
Yes.
There is, excellent. So when you receive this green card, this is what you're supposed to do, and this is why you got it?
I can put specifics.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah.
'Cause I know I've gotten that question before a number of times. What is this green card for?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, obviously, right Shirley's not Lunenburg. We'll have some time, I would imagine, to go over this, and I can get back to you with notes and stuff.
Oh, absolutely, this project is till the end of the year.
Oh, good.
And I'll work up a draft, and, and you'll absolutely...
Okay, great.
Get to read everything.
All right, great. But I think it would definitely be a big help, big help.
Yeah, for sure.
And I think it helps promote our effort to be more friendly toward businesses.
Well put. I know in Shirley, and I don't know about you guys, that they didn't wanna include, like, oh, you go to the town clerk for a dog license, and a this license, and a that license, and...
No, that should be...
They didn't wanna do anything that didn't have to do with development.
Right, that makes sense to me.
Or construction.
Yeah.
One thing I would like to see is, is different types of permits that people are seeking for, like, for like business or, or commercial or residential.
That's a good idea. I mean, that, that takes care of a lot of the questions that you might find in the Q&amp;A.
Types of permits?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
There is within each, each board or commission, I tried to put what permits are...
I saw that, and then even the process is good, too, special permits, variance, subdivision, approval, NOI.
And a lot of this verbiage is gonna be... And a lot of this verbiage is going to be the same, obviously, because 48 is the same for everybody.
Yeah.
So... And I would like it if you can share with, like, the conservation commission, zoning board, like their particular sections, and I can work with Marjorie on that. But you have overall approval, but we want them to be happy with what's in it as well.
Of course.
Something we can cover in the chairs meeting.
The what? Sorry.
We'll have a draft of this before then.
Yeah.
And I can work with Adam on what your process is specifically, because you may have... I think you said you have a liaison to work with applicants before they apply?
Yeah, that's him.
Yep. And we have a clause, we have technical review, but we also have a clause that allows them to come in front of the board and do a seat, yeah, do a pre-submission meeting.
We have, we've had one of those at least, right, already?
And that's encouraged.
It was very, yeah, it was, it was wonderful.
Three or four of them, I mean.
The Hossid guy came in.
Yeah.
Right? And then Prospect Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we've had a few.
All right.
Thanks.
All right.
I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Karen.
Is your email in here?
I can get you her contact information.
Good. All right.
I have cards if you want them. A card?
Thanks.
Can you grab me one, too?
Feel free to email me anything.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Don't go too late.
Marjorie won't let them.
Yeah, right. We're getting there. All righty, on to minutes approval. So we discussed at our last meeting that we do need a motion and a vote for minutes approval. So is there a motion for the minutes of May 14th, 2018, the tri-town hearing?
I move that we approve the minutes of May 14th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the minutes for the public hearing, tri-town landing, 37 Young's Road, May 14.
Second.
No.
Yes.
Yeah, that was what we just did.
No, we did the general minutes.
No, we did the tri-town hearing.
Well, he signed the public hearing one, so...
The tri-town hearing is the first, just the general minutes of May 14th, 2018 would be the motion.
So who moved the first one? I did, so I should move the second one as well, so we don't seem...
Sure.
I move that we accept the minutes for May 14th, 2028.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All righty, committee reports.
Do you want to finish the reorg?
Do we want to finish our reorg? So... Is anyone interested in giving up? I'll put it, any of their appointments or...
Oh, I would. I would gladly give mine up.
Since we have somebody who is maybe willing to take over some of them, wink, wink, nudge, nudge.
Ken has expressed interest in retaining MJTC.
I would love to keep open space. MRPC, I try to make it, it's like, I just can't. My kids are always, they always have something on that night that they...
All right, well, why don't we just go through the, so...
MRPC is first.
Oh, okay. I don't have... MRPC, do we have a nomination for MRPC?
Was that what Ken wanted?
No, if he's MJTC, you can put it right on him, Dave.
Oh, yeah, I'll nominate Ken a goal. Thanks, Dave.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any more nominations? You can throw right back at them, Tanner, if you want.
I'm all right. When did they meet?
Thursday. It's the first Thursday of the month. It's Thursday.
I think they've gone to the Doyle Center now, haven't they?
Yeah.
It's pretty.
Any discussion?
You okay with that?
I mean, I'm somewhat involved with them with the business group anyway, so now.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you, Tanner. So the next one, Adam?
MJTC.
MJTC, is there a motion to...
Yeah, I nominate Ken Chenis.
Any other nominations? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Then capital planning, Matthew retains his seat at a three-year appointment, year in, year two, open space.
I can nominate myself.
I'll nominate Brock of you for open space.
I'll second. Are there any other nominations? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Green community.
I'll keep that one.
I'll nominate Greg Bittner.
Second.
Any other nominations? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Stormwater. I would like to keep that. I'll keep all my appointments.
I nominate Matthew Allison, Stormwater.
I'll second. Any other nominations? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Charter review, and Michael Ray Jeffries has noted his desire to continue the position.
Nominate Michael Ray Jeffries for charter review committee.
Second. Any other nominations? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then agricultural commission.
I nominate Matthew Allison.
I'll second, if you're sure. Any other nominations? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. That cleans up the housework, I guess. All right, so we can go into committee reports. Green Communities Task Force, we have not met since our last meeting, but we did, our chair did make a proposal to the Board of Selectmen in regards to the streetlight buyback. We got several scenarios that would all benefit the town, some more lucrative than others. So it was presented to the Board of Selectmen for their review, and I think we're going to have a discussion on that after they review it. That isn't something that we need to get done too urgently, so I would take an act of town meeting to basically enable that. So we'll discuss it and go from there, I guess.
Great presentation, by the way.
Yeah, it was. I was glad to hear.
Chair, I have a question for you. I was reading recently that I think it was the Lions paid for some kind of an upgrade to lighting or something like that in town. I was...
In our community?
Yeah. And I was curious. I was like, well, why isn't the Green Communities Task Force taking care of that? I think, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it wasn't the Lions, maybe...
We submitted our grant proposal in the spring, and it was accepted for, I think, roughly $236,000. So everything we had outlined was basically...
It would have been in the paper.
Was it public land? Was it a public building?
They sell light bulbs.
Yeah. And I was like, why wouldn't the Green Communities Task Force take care of it? You know, or somebody else, but...
Well, anytime.
I'll go back and check it.
Well, anytime, let me know, because, I mean, those funds are there for that purpose, and that's one of the reasons why we had approached the Board of Selectmen on several occasions, like with the building upgrades, that why not put the grant money towards that instead of the town funds, so...
Yeah. Do you get a lot of outreach from like, uh, like, uh, Jack?
Uh, we solicit input.
You do, okay. So he's aware that he can also probably write?
Take, I, at every opportunity I get to make people aware that those funds are available for these kinds of projects, so they should not...
I, just checking.
Yep, so... Capital planning?
Capital planning has not met.
Stormwater task force?
Stormwater task force met last May 17th to vote in the approval for submission for a grant to provide nine BMPs in seven locations for the Upper Mulpus. The grant, I believe, was matching $80,000 to $80,000. Some of the numbers moved around from the previous draft that we had, but we voted in favor of it. And that was submitted on June 1st. And that was it. That was the reason for the meeting.
Okay. Agcom?
And Agcom met that same evening. There was a potential at the time to sponsor a band concert, and since then, there's been two dates. One of them is going to be before the next meeting, so probably, I think it was July 25th, was the possibility for sponsoring. And unfortunately, there was two current members of Agcom, the chair and the clerk. Both, I believe their next meeting is going to be their last. And we also, at town meeting, approved to have two alternates. So there are four open positions to do with the agricultural commission currently. And because the next meeting will be the last for the chair, they reorganized for the chair positions, chair, vice chair, and I was unanimously nominated and selected to be the chair of Agcom.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
They made a wise choice. And your first farmer's market is coming up, too, right?
June 24, I believe.
MJTC, Ken's not here. MRPC?
Yes, I couldn't make the last meeting. It was the 6th, I believe. And like I was just saying, I got delayed, I couldn't make it because I had my kids at me.
Okay. Open space?
With base, we've met twice on this revision. We've did up the work. Everyone knows this role. It's going well. We're working in conjunction with the CONCON on the whole project. We have a survey, a hard copy survey that's going to go out with the preliminary tax bills. So if you see it in your tax bill, please take the time to fill it out and send it back. And we're going to use that information to solicit funds in the future. That'll help the town, so...
And you have a meeting Tuesday, correct?
And we have another meeting, yes, thank you. We have a meeting coming up on the 19th, I believe it is, Tuesday, the 19th. Or Wednesday, is that Wednesday or Tuesday?
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 19th.
7:30.
7:30, Ritter Building. And we could use all the public participation that we can get.
Okay. Is that it?
That is it for now.
All right, charter review, I'm not...
They have not met, I don't believe.
They have not met. I'll solicit input from Michael to give to you for...
Yeah, his email...
Well, just for committee reports.
Yeah, his email suggests that he could, he would do written or appear before the board and give updates. I think it's up to you how you want to do that. I think written is probably sufficient unless there's a...
Till we get closer to town meeting, whatever, yeah. All right.
Question for Matthew, if that's all right. Is the farmer's market in the same location over at the Ritter?
As I know. I think the hours have changed. They bumped them up an hour.
Okay.
Before it was 10 to 2, and I think it's now 11 to 3.
Okay.
But I'm not positive.
I think it was 10 to 1, and now it's 11 to 2.
11 to 2?
The signs on my front, you know, I just don't remember.
That sounds more reasonable, yes.
Okay. It's still Saturdays.
Sunday.
I mean, Sundays, yeah.
No, it's still Saturdays. It's still Sundays. That's why you never get anything.
I do so.
You keep showing up on Saturdays.
No, no, I've seen it there a number of times.
All righty, moving on to director's items.
All right, so maybe three or four months ago, the board voted to allow the chair to sign approval decisions in lieu of the board for items that are required to be filed with the town clerk within 14 days of the decision being made. Again, he's not authorizing anything the board hasn't already done. He's just getting signatory power. The board said they wanted to do that at each reorganization, and here we are, all reorganized and ready to vote again.
Basically, this just gives me the ability to sign.
It prevents you all from having to run into the office and sign in a, you know, five-day period.
Everybody still gets the decision. You still get to review it. If there's, anytime you have a question or a comment or something you want to edit, let myself or Marjorie or Adam know, and we'll work it out. It just basically makes it easier to meet the timelines, was the basic concern, so...
So essentially, like, for tri-town?
So what will happen is we'll write a decision. It'll get sent to the board. We'll say, we want comments by this date. If, what would happen is if the board chose to not authorize Greg to do it, we'd say, you need to be in the office and have signed it by this time and date. If it's Greg, we just call Greg and bug him.
Okay. Would you like to verbalize the motion? That might, what might that look like?
I move that we endorse the chair to sign for the decisions.
Just like that?
I will second that.
Awesome.
Would you like my ventriloquism?
Amazing.
Oh, I have the red, oh, you have a red line version. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I know it's been a few meetings, but we're going to talk about Asian Imperials parking.
Wonderful.
In a positive tone?
Ken's not here, that's not...
No, they, they've installed the subsurface drainage. It was inspected by Graves. Everything looked good. If you've driven by there recently, they've done the hardscaping and the paving, so things are looking up. I do have to look at the approval. It looks like they left the driveway apron from the house, and I don't recall that being part of the original plan.
I don't believe it was.
And really, what made it seem weird was I drove by and there were four cars parked there.
Yeah.
And I went, hmm. So I've got to look at that and follow up with them on that, you know. The reality is it's...
Because I'll be the bad guy.
No, 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 no. I mean, that's...
So dangerous.
And it's a really simple fix. I mean, it's a saw cut and some more stone. It just, there's just enough room to park a couple of cars and...
Just begging for trouble.
Well, yeah, you know, I mean, because people are either going to be backing up on electric Ave to get into the space, pointing out, or they're going to be backing out.
It was a 350.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Yeah.
And he was pulled head in.
Into the, into traffic. It's not good.
So I'll follow up with the building inspector on that and look at the plans, but I'm, you know, almost certain that it isn't. It looks, it looks fantastic. And it really, it does dress their whole restaurant up and...
And they actually did the whole thing in one shot, and the stage phasing and such like that.
I think they probably got a better deal on what they were doing, and it just makes sense. And I think all in all, it looks good. They had, they had called me about making a de minimis change, so you may see that from them, where they'll end up potentially losing one or two spaces for some shuffling of stuff. But I think it may be for the best once they do it, but we'll wait and see if they end up doing that.
They install lighting?
I...
My other concern was the light that was on the...
Yeah, I don't think I've seen lighting yet, but they're clearly not done. I don't know if the top coat is on the upper lot, and they certainly haven't striped it. So I know they're not done, but they're, they're done enough that they're starting to use it.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm watching. I'm watching the light, and it seems like there's one too many curb cuts. I don't remember.
They're on different streets.
Did they have enough spaces to lose a couple?
Yes. Yeah. They, because they didn't, they had enough spaces to begin with, and because they didn't increase the size of the restaurant, there was no need to increase spaces. So I think they ended up coming out 15 in the black with the ones that they lost from the new, the new travel aisles. And I, so with them not changing the configuration of the restaurant, they were well in the positive.
That's why. They only needed two per table, so they could have a 10-top and only need two spots.
Sorry, just bringing this up as a, as a comment. I'm not trying to redesign it for them. But I mean, even if that thing were on the inside, you know what I mean?
Well...
It would be better.
Well, that would increase the pervasive surface.
Yes, it would. But, well, so does that as it is, so...
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll look at it and get it sorted out.
Okay.
We, was about two months ago, the, we were referred the issue over on Flat Hill Road for the drainage from the Board of Selectmen. We certainly had our discussion here. I went, looked through our files, as extensive as they are, and... There's a lot of paper. I don't know how much of it is useful. But what, excuse me, what we found is there's no... But what... Excuse me. What we found is there's no specific operation and maintenance plan in any of the drainage paperwork, being that it's from mid-'90s. There is a condition in the approval that requires it to be constructed and maintained per the original design. So in discussing with the Building Inspector, we sent a letter to the condo trustees. It's evident that they haven't been maintaining the detention ponds at a minimum. One would certainly infer that that probably extends to the catch basins as well, but not really sure. I think most of the catch basin fillings have ended up in the detention pond, because if you look... The pictures aren't great to see because it's black and white, but the color pictures... There's certainly woody vegetation growing in the slopes. And there is a stone check dam that you can see where it is, but it's only about two or three inches above the base of the pond, which is usually evidence that the pond is silting up and filling. So we've ordered them to come up with a plan to restore it to its original or prove to us that they have been maintaining it and that it's in the order that it should be. Now, what the length and, you know, time it would take them to do that, you know, is going to be much greater than 30 days. The actual work. The plan, they need to come up with in 30 days, and, you know, obviously then they need to do their bidding and their contracting and all of that, so. And this is about as much as we can do from the planning board and the land use perspective to resolve that issue, because this is the only thing that is constructed over there that would potentially be impacting it. If, you know, it's designed, we can look further at it and see if it was adequately reviewed. And, I mean, there were peer reviews. There were changes made. There were all of that kind of stuff. The Board signed off on it being constructed appropriately. So it's hard to go back in time 12 years and say, "Oh, well, that Board was wrong." Because, you know, I know you've been involved in it, Matthew, but from the Board perspective, it's, you know...
I was asking at the meetings, are we pretty sure that this is the root cause of what's happening over there?
No.
No, but this is what we can do to help rectify it.
And it might not rectify it at all. It might do a ton to rectify it.
This is a situation that we did recognize. That's in the media there.
Well, you know, this was... Okay, well, this looks like this hasn't been maintained. The overflow does overflow onto the Flat Hill Road side of the property. Whether it's causing the deluge, you know... There's other property where there's a deluge of water coming down that's not these detention basins. And where that water originates is undetermined. It certainly could be from properties that are part of the village that are uphill. But there's no evidence of that. There's no evidence not of that.
It's also a way for us to learn from past experience and try not to repeat history by cleaning up our decisions and making sure that we spell out everything as clear as possible for the future as well.
And again, you know, I think that's true to a degree. I also think that this is prior to stormwater management being a formal state requirement. It was a, I think it was a guidebook or handbook at that point, and now it's regulations, and so the state...
To do it, right?
Yeah, state and local entities have recognized as time grows that this needs to be formalized and is more evident. And, you know, operation and maintenance plan, all that stuff is now addendums to what we get for stormwater calculations.
I'm not suggesting this, but it does raise questions about... We've done this before. We've had reviews.
Well, we've even conditioned the ones on Northfield Road that had a note on their deed that it's their responsibility to maintain their basins. And that's so well, because then people can't claim ignorance when they buy the property if they don't read their deed. That's on them. If it's not on there, they can't read it.
My question is, is there actually a legal remedy that we can provide by going back and saying, "You know what? We're going to review that approval and make some adjustments as a stormwater..."
To be determined.
No, you know, I think that's a really hard thing to do.
Yeah, okay.
There's no vehicle... I guess you could write it into your site plan bylaw that says, "We have the legal right to, of our own volition, go and change it in a similar way to subdivisions." You might get some pushback on that. There's no vehicle within special permit to have the Board voluntarily...
Because it meets the special permit. That exists.
Well, you've granted the special permit, yeah. So there's nothing to allow the Board of Its Own Volition to initiate a modification. Now, there is under the subdivision control law, the planning board can say, "We're going to do this, and we're going to change that subdivision." It's not often done. Usually, if it's done, it's as a rescission, because they've violated something in the approval. With special permits and site plans, if there's an approval violation, which technically we have with Flat Hill, I think it's more of a violation by ignorance than a willful, you know, "Hmm," you know, pound sand. It becomes a zoning enforcement issue, because once the Board issues that approval, it's under the zoning bylaw, and enforcement is through the zoning enforcement officer.
Of course. Okay. Thank you.
And so what's the next... So if they just choose not to respond to this, what's the next course?
I think it would be... It'd be an escalation of the enforcement action. And that would be ultimately at the discretion of the Building Inspector, but it would most likely be an order to perform an action. And if there's a failure to do that, then it would probably move into fining and other potential.
Okay. Have they reached out to you or Gary?
We received... No, we just received the green card today, which means, and I think it was dated the 7th. So they just received it four days ago, which means they probably signed it on Thursday. Where they are in association, you know, obviously, they probably have to convene a meeting to have a discussion about what this means, what they're doing. You know, so I would expect 30... Within 30 days of June 7th, we would have contact from them and kind of move forward.
All right. Thank you.
And the last thing is the pot survey. So I sent you all a draft survey. I did get some comments from Ken, and most of his comments revolved around adding numbers to certain things or... Didn't I send you some? Comments on that?
Sure did.
I don't... Did you? I believe that you did. I don't... I don't recall seeing them, but... It doesn't mean I didn't read them and put them somewhere. So Ken's saying, you know, "We should limit... Change the limits from a yes/no to a, you know, don't allow them at all, no more than two, no more than four, no more than six, no more than eight." And sort of doing that with the other questions that limit things, just to kind of get an idea of what people might see as a reasonable limit.
Yeah, I mean, I somewhat agree, but I also don't want people to think this is like a town meeting vote that they have in their hands, where, I mean, this is a fact-finding document to gauge the temperature of the town.
Sure, and I think that, you know, I actually kind of agree with Ken seeing that. I thought about that, and I said, "Well, let's just sort of talk about whether we should limit it or not." But it makes sense in some ways, because it gives you an idea of what people want to gauge, because no more than two would kick us into a ballot vote, because it'd be less than 20% of our off-premise license. You know, no more than four wouldn't. If we, you know, if we have three, that's like 26 or 27% of our off-premise license, which you're allowed to do by bylaw without the need to go to ballot vote. So, you know, again, I take his point.
Now, does that requirement function on each type, meaning if we need more than 20%?
You can only limit retail.
Okay.
So you can't say, "We can only have three cultivators." But you can limit where cultivators are allowed to locate. So you can... What we would be doing through zoning is time, place, and manner. So you could prohibit them from...
What about onsite?
Yeah, residential districts, and that severely limits them. There's some question about indoor versus outdoor cultivation, because the medical marijuana laws from 2012 didn't speak to outdoor cultivation. This law specifically speaks to permitting outdoor cultivation. And there's a question as to whether prohibition of outdoor cultivation constitutes prohibition of one of the categories and would require a ballot vote in yes communities or not. I've heard three different answers to that.
Did you ask two people?
Yes.
What about onsite use? Is that considered retail in the state regs?
Onsite use is not being permitted at this time.
Okay.
No, I didn't get back to you on this.
I was going to say, I'm not seeing it. I...
But there are... I got some questions about some of the wording here. It's kind of awkward. How should the town use permit... Oh, how should the town use permit non-medical adult-use marijuana retail establishments? Wicked.
Doesn't pass the grammar test.
Probably sausage fingered. What number?
Number nine. I can't follow that at all.
Yes, that's... Use shouldn't be in there.
Okay. Same thing for 10.
Yeah.
And 11.
Yeah.
12.
And then instead of none, can you say, "They shouldn't," or something like that?
And 13.
I mean, I could take the none out.
Yeah, they should be by right.
And just, "They should be by right."
And how is this going to be distributed?
I was going to put it on Survey Monkey, which is kind of the easiest, I think, if we put it on tonight.
11, 12, and...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that was a cut and paste of, you know, doing it for each different kind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, Survey Monkey isn't the most scientific or reliable, but...
Really? Because you wouldn't get that from the name.
Well, I'm just thinking of like...
It's the easiest distribution. It does the calculation for you. Coding a survey is never easy. Paper surveys are just... Aren't any more secure.
Council on Aging to put some paper copies there, because, I mean, that's... A lot of people don't have access.
They've got a computer, right?
Well, maybe just put something out there that says, you know...
And I think what my take would be is, once the Board's okay with the language, we'd get into Survey Monkey and have it up before the listening session, inform people about it at the listening session, and sort of close it, you know, right after 4th of July or so. Give it, you know, three, three and a half, four weeks of being up there and have some time to get information out there. And, you know, none of this is ever going to be scientific.
No, I know. I just, my purpose of doing a survey is to get as many eyes on it as possible and get as many responses as possible, so.
Give yourself a chance to fill out 300 of them.
Well, no, you know what I mean. I'd probably...
Now, when it comes to zoning it, like, take cultivation, for example. If you choose to zone it to a specific district, like the commercial district, and then apply setbacks to that, we could effectively limit it to the point... Like, the commercial district, for example, a lot of it's along 2A. If you say, "Well, you need a 500-foot setback," you'll... There's probably maybe one property that could meet that, given the fact that the commercial district's only 200 feet deep.
Yeah, and as long as you don't...
Eradicate it.
Effectively prohibit it through the regulation.
Then you'd...
You know, I mean, I've seen communities do things, specifically like adult-use stuff, where they write the zoning so it effectively ends up being like three properties. And it passes the AG's test, because they haven't de facto prohibited it. But they've made it incredibly difficult to permit.
But that's clearly something we need to be well aware of.
Correct.
If we craft this, so we don't get ourselves into a legal...
Yeah, and Town Council is going to assist with this. You know, I mean, I don't see any way around having them not be heavily involved. I think with the number of people who have outright prohibited it, I don't know that the town is willing to go in that direction. Perhaps they are. We were close. It was...
53.
53 to 46. So, I mean, that's, you know, it's a pretty tight margin. I actually thought it was the other way around. I thought it was 56 to 43, but... So, you know, I think that there's an appetite for it. I don't think there's an appetite for it to be a main business in town. And I think that there's ways to make it fit with what we have. You know, I think a lot of the cultivation stuff carries on with where the community sort of lies as its core values as far as being agricultural. You know, again, this is essentially an indoor cultivation type of thing, you know. I've talked to a number of different people who've been interested either in this community or other communities I've worked in, and I've only talked to one person who was really interested in doing anything outside. And they were looking to buttress an indoor cultivation somewhere else with just having some outdoor that they could do simple stuff with that they didn't need. So, you know, you're looking at structures and infrastructure and all that to support whatever goes in.
And the listening session is going to be geared towards mostly residents or other boards or...
To whoever shows up.
But at what point do we approach, like, Chief Marino?
I've invited the chief.
Well, I prefer the residents take the lead on the discussion there. I mean...
Okay, then we can... I can tell the chief that, you know, he'd be...
No, no, I want him to be there, but I don't want him to stand up and make a statement, and everybody, you know... Just, I prefer to hear from the residents first, because we should be taking our cues from them, so. I'm more than happy to hear.
I mean, I guess technically, he's a resident too, so...
No, I understand that, but... And I want him to be involved in the process. But I think hearing from the residents from their own point of view is most important to start with.
And I imagine what's going to end up happening is we'll be taking the existing RMD bylaw and building the non-medical use into that, so it'll be a bifurcated bylaw where there's a RMD section, an adult-use section, and then an all-marijuana section. That's like looking at, you know, safety regulations and setbacks and whatever else that would apply, regardless of whether it's medical or non-medical.
All right. Any other questions or comments on that?
No. So what do you want? You're just going to go with that, then fix it up and send it out, or you want more comments?
I want you guys to say, "We're okay with the survey," and then I'll...
I'm okay with the survey.
I'll hand it to the monkey, and so do you want me to incorporate Ken's numerical question?
We can. I don't think it's going to confuse... I mean, that's just me, but I don't think it's going to confuse anything.
So it'll be question two and question eight that get altered.
Yep. And then just take the word "use" out of...
Yeah, I've got that. The "use" and the "none" comes out of nine through 12.
Yep. All righty. Notices and communications. I think we've all gotten those. You have your email set up and everything, Tanner, right? All righty. Our meeting schedule. All Board meetings are held in Town Hall 6:30 PM unless otherwise indicated. We have an executive session Monday night with the Board of Selectmen. And then our next meeting after that is a listening session for the recreational marijuana bylaw. Is that our next regularly scheduled meeting, or is that...
What's that, 25th? Yes. We don't have anything else on there currently, other than... And we don't have anything else on there currently, other than an A&R, yeah, I mean...
Are we getting, okay. Would you recommend we do that first?
The A&R?
Taking care of, no, the...
No, I would do the A&R and bounce them.
First, but if we, so we're not going to have time to get another application in or address something?
No, no, because they would have had, I mean, unless, unless someone comes in with like a de minimis change or something, and, you know, anything that would, can't come in, we'd...
So there'd be no public hearings or something?
Yeah, no, no. We'd, if, if there were something minor that came in, I'd squeeze it in before the listening session just to get it over with, and no one actually shows up at 6:30 for the most part.
Yeah, so. All right, any public comment from the board? Crickets, all right. Any public comment from the public? Alrighty, ongoing items, we have the Village of Flat Hill, and we're waiting to hear back from them. The Board of Appeals?
Oh, that's the, that's the change, the 90-day.
Okay. The sign bylaw, we did receive some comments regarding the village sign. Have you received any information or...
I, I spoke with a tenant of the village today, and essentially they're trying to convince the owner to apply to move the sign closer to the street.
Okay.
I don't know what will come of that.
That would have to come to us.
Correct, it'd be a modification to their special permit.
All right. Economic development, is there any more?
On June 25th, there'll be another business partnership meeting. I don't know if it's solidified for 5:00 or 5:30. So I would attend that in part, because I don't know how long they would go, but...
Alrighty, board comments and concerns?
Thank you for being chair again.
Thank you for nominating me, I'm humbled yet again, so. No, seriously, thank you. Alrighty, I'll accept a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Here it comes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Go on, Eric.
Here you go, Marjorie. Thank you.